Hey, Michelle, did you get the updated packet I sent you? Hey, Michelle, did you get the updated packet I sent you? Hey, Michelle, did you get the updated packet I sent you? Hey, Michelle, did you get the updated packet I sent you? Hey, Michelle, did you get the updated packet I sent you?
Yeah, I was just gonna send you a message. You're probably gonna have to share it on your screen because it is not downloading for me. Yeah, I was just gonna send you a message. You're probably gonna have to share it on your screen because it is not downloading for me. Yeah, I was just gonna send you a message. You're probably gonna have to share it on your screen because it is not downloading for me. Yeah, I was just gonna send you a message. You're probably gonna have to share it on your screen because it is not downloading for me. Yeah, I was just gonna send you a message. You're probably gonna have to share it on your screen because it is not downloading for me.
Um, you can use the other one if that one's open, that's fine. Um, you can use the other one if that one's open, that's fine. Um, you can use the other one if that one's open, that's fine. Um, you can use the other one if that one's open, that's fine. Um, you can use the other one if that one's open, that's fine.
That one's not either. It's the, I'm at home using a mobile hotspot and it's just not. That one's not either. It's the, I'm at home using a mobile hotspot and it's just not. That one's not either. It's the, I'm at home using a mobile hotspot and it's just not. That one's not either. It's the, I'm at home using a mobile hotspot and it's just not. That one's not either. It's the, I'm at home using a mobile hotspot and it's just not.
Um, okay, then I need to forward that to myself. Um, okay, then I need to forward that to myself. Um, okay, then I need to forward that to myself. Um, okay, then I need to forward that to myself. Um, okay, then I need to forward that to myself.
Verizon is not cooperating today. 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 Verizon is not cooperating today.
I've never. I've never. I've never. I've never. I've never.
It's downloading, but I meant like 2.3 out of 12. You know what I mean? It's been doing it for like 15 minutes, so. It's downloading, but I meant like 2.3 out of 12. You know what I mean? It's been doing it for like 15 minutes, so. It's downloading, but I meant like 2.3 out of 12. You know what I mean? It's been doing it for like 15 minutes, so. It's downloading, but I meant like 2.3 out of 12. You know what I mean? It's been doing it for like 15 minutes, so. It's downloading, but I meant like 2.3 out of 12. You know what I mean? It's been doing it for like 15 minutes, so.
You'll be done when the meeting's done. 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 You'll be done when the meeting's done.
Right. 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 Right.
Might as well stop it. I can share, it's not a big deal. Might as well stop it. I can share, it's not a big deal. Might as well stop it. I can share, it's not a big deal. Might as well stop it. I can share, it's not a big deal. Might as well stop it. I can share, it's not a big deal.
Do you want me to forward that email back to you? Do you want me to forward that email back to you? Do you want me to forward that email back to you? Do you want me to forward that email back to you? Do you want me to forward that email back to you?
Uh, no, I have to, I don't, um, they didn't set up, uh, my email on this new computer, so I have to send it to my personal email. Uh, no, I have to, I don't, um, they didn't set up, uh, my email on this new computer, so I have to send it to my personal email. Uh, no, I have to, I don't, um, they didn't set up, uh, my email on this new computer, so I have to send it to my personal email. Uh, no, I have to, I don't, um, they didn't set up, uh, my email on this new computer, so I have to send it to my personal email. Uh, no, I have to, I don't, um, they didn't set up, uh, my email on this new computer, so I have to send it to my personal email. At least until Denise can set it up. 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 At least until Denise can set it up.
Just log into the, um, I just go to outlook.com and login that way. Just log into the, um, I just go to outlook.com and login that way. Just log into the, um, I just go to outlook.com and login that way. Just log into the, um, I just go to outlook.com and login that way. Just log into the, um, I just go to outlook.com and login that way.
Oh, I'm already set up to do it this way. Not too worried. Oh, I'm already set up to do it this way. Not too worried. Oh, I'm already set up to do it this way. Not too worried. Oh, I'm already set up to do it this way. Not too worried. Oh, I'm already set up to do it this way. Not too worried. I gotta try to shovel down some macaroni and cheese before this meeting. I gotta try to shovel down some macaroni and cheese before this meeting. I gotta try to shovel down some macaroni and cheese before this meeting. I gotta try to shovel down some macaroni and cheese before this meeting. I gotta try to shovel down some macaroni and cheese before this meeting. Alright, so I'm gonna attempt to share my screen even though I've never done it. Alright, so I'm gonna attempt to share my screen even though I've never done it. Alright, so I'm gonna attempt to share my screen even though I've never done it. Alright, so I'm gonna attempt to share my screen even though I've never done it. Alright, so I'm gonna attempt to share my screen even though I've never done it. Did that work? Did that work? Did that work? Did that work? Did that work?
Oh, sorry, I was on the, uh. 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 Setting up closed captioning. Yeah, I can see your screen. Setting up closed captioning. Yeah, I can see your screen. Setting up closed captioning. Yeah, I can see your screen. Setting up closed captioning. Yeah, I can see your screen. Setting up closed captioning. Yeah, I can see your screen.
I can't see anything else, though. 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 I can't see anything else, though.
Yeah, that's kinda how it works. 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 If you go down to your tools, you should be able to, um, choose to pull up like the video images still. If you go down to your tools, you should be able to, um, choose to pull up like the video images still. If you go down to your tools, you should be able to, um, choose to pull up like the video images still. If you go down to your tools, you should be able to, um, choose to pull up like the video images still. If you go down to your tools, you should be able to, um, choose to pull up like the video images still.
On my tool. On my tool. On my tool. On my tool. On my tool.
I was able to pull up the packet. 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 I was able to pull up the packet.
You were? You were? You were? You were? You were?
Yeah, because I, when I was trying to download it, I saved it to my OneDrive and I was, I just tried to pull it from there and I can see it from there, so I can share it that way if you want me to. Yeah, because I, when I was trying to download it, I saved it to my OneDrive and I was, I just tried to pull it from there and I can see it from there, so I can share it that way if you want me to. Yeah, because I, when I was trying to download it, I saved it to my OneDrive and I was, I just tried to pull it from there and I can see it from there, so I can share it that way if you want me to. Yeah, because I, when I was trying to download it, I saved it to my OneDrive and I was, I just tried to pull it from there and I can see it from there, so I can share it that way if you want me to. Yeah, because I, when I was trying to download it, I saved it to my OneDrive and I was, I just tried to pull it from there and I can see it from there. So I can share it that way if you want me to.
Yeah, cuz I can't see anything. 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 Yeah, cuz I can't see anything.
Yeah, I can do that if you want. 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 Yeah, I can do that if you want.
That worked, so I'm sure I'll, I need to see who's talking or else I won't know by here if they do roll call. That worked, so I'm sure I'll, I need to see who's talking or else I won't know by here if they do roll call. That worked, so I'm sure I'll, I need to see who's talking or else I won't know by here if they do roll call. That worked, so I'm sure I'll, I need to see who's talking or else I won't know by here if they do roll call. That worked, so I'm sure I'll, I need to see who's talking or else I won't know by here if they do roll call.
This is what it'll, um, look like on mine, hang on. This is what it'll, um, look like on mine, hang on. This is what it'll, um, look like on mine, hang on. This is what it'll, um, look like on mine, hang on. This is what it'll, um, look like on mine, hang on. If that looks alright, I can do that. 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 If that looks alright, I can do that.
Yeah, that looks fine to me. Can you just zoom it out so you can see the whole page, though? Yeah, that looks fine to me. Can you just zoom it out so you can see the whole page, though? Yeah, that looks fine to me. Can you just zoom it out so you can see the whole page, though? Yeah, that looks fine to me. Can you just zoom it out so you can see the whole page, though? Yeah, that looks fine to me. Can you just zoom it out so you can see the whole page, though?
Then it gets really small. 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 Then it gets really small.
Don't they have a, eh, I guess it doesn't matter, you scroll down some if we need to. Don't they have a, eh, I guess it doesn't matter, you scroll down some if we need to. Don't they have a, eh, I guess it doesn't matter, you scroll down some if we need to. Don't they have a, eh, I guess it doesn't matter, you scroll down some if we need to. Don't they have a, eh, I guess it doesn't matter, you scroll down some if we need to.
I'm sure it'll let me download it from here. I'm sure it'll let me download it from here. I'm sure it'll let me download it from here. I'm sure it'll let me download it from here. I'm sure it'll let me download it from here.
Well, if it's on your OneDrive, then you should be able to open it if you have OneDrive on your computer. Well, if it's on your OneDrive, then you should be able to open it if you have OneDrive on your computer. Well, if it's on your OneDrive, then you should be able to open it if you have OneDrive on your computer. Well, if it's on your OneDrive, then you should be able to open it if you have OneDrive on your computer. Well, if it's on your OneDrive, then you should be able to open it if you have OneDrive on your computer.
Oh, it's downloaded at a decent speed now. I'll be able to download it. Oh, it's downloaded at a decent speed now. I'll be able to download it. Oh, it's downloaded at a decent speed now. I'll be able to download it. Oh, it's downloaded at a decent speed now. I'll be able to download it. Oh, it's downloaded at a decent speed now. I'll be able to download it. I just didn't wanna download it from my email for some reason. I'll be able to pull it up like normal. I just didn't wanna download it from my email for some reason. I'll be able to pull it up like normal. I just didn't wanna download it from my email for some reason. I'll be able to pull it up like normal. I just didn't wanna download it from my email for some reason. I'll be able to pull it up like normal. I just didn't wanna download it from my email for some reason. I'll be able to pull it up like normal.
It's probably that thing we use. 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 It's probably that thing we use.
Mine was super slow today for some reason, my email in general. Mine was super slow today for some reason, my email in general. Mine was super slow today for some reason, my email in general. Mine was super slow today for some reason, my email in general. Mine was super slow today for some reason, my email in general. Alright, now we're in business. I'm gonna save this to my computer. Alright, now we're in business. I'm gonna save this to my computer. Alright, now we're in business. I'm gonna save this to my computer. Alright, now we're in business. I'm gonna save this to my computer. Alright, now we're in business. I'm gonna save this to my computer.
So the only one not attached should be CO. So the only one not attached should be CO. So the only one not attached should be CO. So the only one not attached should be CO. So the only one not attached should be CO.
So, can you see the participants window on my screen or do you just see the agenda? So, can you see the participants window on my screen or do you just see the agenda? So, can you see the participants window on my screen or do you just see the agenda? So, can you see the participants window on my screen or do you just see the agenda? So, can you see the participants window on my screen or do you just see the agenda?
Just the agenda. Just the agenda. Just the agenda. Just the agenda. Just the agenda.
Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect. Did you still need to, um, didn't you tell me you needed to like measure or something on here? Did you still need to, um, didn't you tell me you needed to like measure or something on here? Did you still need to, um, didn't you tell me you needed to like measure or something on here? Did you still need to, um, didn't you tell me you needed to like measure or something on here? Did you still need to, um, didn't you tell me you needed to like measure something on here?
I may, and if I do, I'll, I'll share a screen then. I may, and if I do, I'll, I'll share a screen then. I may, and if I do, I'll, I'll share a screen then. I may, and if I do, I'll, I'll share a screen then. I may, and if I do, I'll, I'll share a screen then.
Okay. 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 Okay.
It, it's gonna be for the shadow ordinance part, but we'll see what, we'll see where that goes. It, it's gonna be for the shadow ordinance part, but we'll see what, we'll see where that goes. It, it's gonna be for the shadow ordinance part, but we'll see what, we'll see where that goes. It, it's gonna be for the shadow ordinance part, but we'll see what, we'll see where that goes. It, it's gonna be for the shadow ordinance part, but we'll see what, we'll see where that goes.
Just make sure like if they're wanting me to show them something in particular, like sometimes Mike will be talking and then I don't necessarily know what he's referring to, so I'm trying to guess, get to where he wants me to go. Just make sure like if they're wanting me to show them something in particular, like sometimes Mike will be talking and then I don't necessarily know what he's referring to, so I'm trying to guess, get to where he wants me to go. Just make sure like if they're wanting me to show them something in particular, like sometimes Mike will be talking and then I don't necessarily know what he's referring to, so I'm trying to guess, get to where he wants me to go. Just make sure like if they're wanting me to show them something in particular, like sometimes Mike will be talking and then I don't necessarily know what he's referring to, so I'm trying to guess, get to where he wants me to go. Just make sure like if they're wanting me to show them something in particular, like sometimes Mike will be talking and then I don't necessarily know what he's referring to, so I'm trying to guess, get to where he wants me to go.
If that is. If that is. If that is. If that is. If that is.
If you see that happening, just feel free to tell me where it is that he's wanting me to go. If you see that happening, just feel free to tell me where it is that he's wanting me to go. If you see that happening, just feel free to tell me where it is that he's wanting me to go. If you see that happening, just feel free to tell me where it is that he's wanting me to go. If you see that happening, just feel free to tell me where it is that he's wanting me to go.
I set my chat, so it only goes to you, so if that happens, it'll send you, I'll send you a message. I set my chat, so it only goes to you, so if that happens, it'll send you, I'll send you a message. I set my chat, so it only goes to you, so if that happens, it'll send you, I'll send you a message. I set my chat, so it only goes to you, so if that happens, it'll send you, I'll send you a message. I set my chat, so it only goes to you, so if that happens, it'll send you, I'll send you a message.
Alright. 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 Alright.
Hey Troy, I see that you're in here. Um, and I don't think you can speak, but, um, if you can, can you give me a call tomorrow around 1:00? Hey Troy, I see that you're in here. Um, and I don't think you can speak, but, um, if you can, can you give me a call tomorrow around 1:00? Hey Troy, I see that you're in here. Um, and I don't think you can speak, but, um, if you can, can you give me a call tomorrow around 1:00? Hey Troy, I see that you're in here. Um, and I don't think you can speak, but, um, if you can, can you give me a call tomorrow around 1:00? Hey Troy, I see that you're in here. Um, and I don't think you can speak, but, um, if you can, can you give me a call tomorrow around 1:00?
Yeah, we can do that. 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 Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, um, yeah, plan on talking to me about 1:00 or you can come in if you want to, uh, you and Steve. Okay, um, yeah, plan on talking to me about 1:00 or you can come in if you want to, uh, you and Steve. Okay, um, yeah, plan on talking to me about 1:00 or you can come in if you want to, uh, you and Steve. Okay, um, yeah, plan on talking to me about 1:00 or you can come in if you want to, uh, you and Steve. Okay, um, yeah, plan on talking to me about 1:00 or you can come in if you want to, uh, you and Steve.
Okay, uh, do you know if there'll be anything tonight on ZBA for that or did that get let go or? Okay, uh, do you know if there'll be anything tonight on ZBA for that or did that get let go or? Okay, uh, do you know if there'll be anything tonight on ZBA for that or did that get let go or? Okay, uh, do you know if there'll be anything tonight on ZBA for that or did that get let go or? Okay, uh, do you know if there'll be anything tonight on ZBA for that or did that get let go or?
There shouldn't be anything ZBA. I'll talk to you about that tomorrow. There shouldn't be anything ZBA. If, I'll talk to you about that tomorrow. There shouldn't be anything ZBA. If, I'll talk to you about that tomorrow. There shouldn't be anything ZBA. If, I'll talk to you about that tomorrow. There shouldn't be anything ZBA. If, I'll talk to you about that tomorrow.
Okay, cool. Okay, cool. Okay, cool. Okay, cool. Okay, cool.
Well, there won't be a need for the ZBA anymore. Well, there won't be a need for the ZBA anymore. Well, there won't be a need for the ZBA anymore. Well, there won't be a need for the ZBA anymore. Well, there won't be a need for the ZBA anymore.
Good deal. That's why we're here to make sure if we needed to do anything or not, so. Good deal. That's why we're here to make sure if we needed to do anything or not, so. Good deal. That's why we're here to make sure if we needed to do anything or not, so. Good deal. That's why we're here to make sure if we needed to do anything or not, so. Good deal. That's why we're here to make sure if we needed to do anything or not, so.
As long as what I heard about the percentage at your own, you should be fine. As long as what I heard about the percentage at your own, you should be fine. As long as what I heard about the percentage at your own, you should be fine. As long as what I heard about the percentage at your own, you should be fine. As long as what I heard about the percentage at your own, you should be fine.
Okay, good deal. We'll be over tomorrow to see you. Okay, good deal. We'll be over tomorrow to see you. Okay, good deal. We'll be over tomorrow to see you. Okay, good deal. We'll be over tomorrow to see you. Okay, good deal. We'll be over tomorrow to see you.
Alright. 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 Alright.
Thanks, man. Thanks, man. Thanks, man. Thanks, man. Thanks, man.
Yep. 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 Yep.
Hey, Jeremy.
Yeah.
There's also a severe thunderstorm warning till like 7:30.
Okay.
So, you're a co-host just in case my internet drops out, the meeting will keep going, but, um, someone might wanna just mention at the very beginning of the meeting, if for some reason we were to like both lose power and the meeting drops, everybody just goes back to the same link.
Okay.
Just saying good evening, gentlemen.
My apologies, apparently my microphone was dead. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
No? Yeah?
Yes.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we have, in fact, let me. I'm muting. Yeah, okay, we're good. Meeting has been called to order. September 1st, regular meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. First item on our agenda is consideration of the minutes from our August 4th meeting. Commissioners, I believe you have copies of those minutes and have an opportunity to review them. I just mentioned before, I realized I wasn't on the air, that on what I think would be the top of page three. Under the first line where it says motion carried eight to zero, the next few lines are redundant and are a repeat of what's at the bottom of page two. Are there any other additions or corrections?
Move to approve.
Or Mr. Watson, second by Mr. Taylor for approval of the August 4th minutes.
Not Taylor.
Oh, okay.
I did.
Chad?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well. Then the August 13 special meeting minutes.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Says that Robert Love was absent, but it also said in the, under new business that all planning commissioners were in attendance, so.
I've noted that as well, sir, and I would suggest we scratch the line, all planning commissioners were in attendance. And start that sentence with general discussion was had.
Assuming that Bob Love was not there.
I don't remember.
And, and I'm pretty sure that Bob was not.
No, he's not.
Okay, he's here tonight, so. Any other additions or corrections to the August 13 minutes?
Approval with corrections as noted.
Mr. Taylor, is there support?
Support.
Again from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay, any opposed? That's our approved. Next item on our agenda is case 20030, 1139 Treat Street. A zoning exception and site plan review for marijuana growing facility and a dispensary. Before we get too far into that, let me just take a minute and review how we handle zoning exception permits. Zoning exception permit allows a development or use which is listed in the ordinance, but has been designated as a special exception. As such, these uses are generally considered as compatible with the other uses in that zoning district, but require a special review to ensure that they meet the specified requirements. The way we'll go, we'll handle this for both commission and for the public. We will first hear from the applicant and they can tell us what it is they would like to in support of their application. Commissioners then may ask the applicant any questions they may have. We will then take comments from the public that relate to the application, either for or against the proposed use. We'll review any comments received from the public either via mail or phone. Then we'll close the public hearing and the commission will discuss the application. When we consider an application for a zoning exception permit, there are both general and specific criteria that we need to consider. In general, does the proposed use meet the specific requirements? We'll get to those in just a second. Would granting the permit have an adverse effect on the environment or the value of surrounding properties? Is the proposed use compatible with the adjacent and surrounding properties? And is the proposed use consistent with the city's future land use plan? Relative to marijuana facilities, we need to consider if the facility holds a valid license from the state, or if one has been applied for. Has the permit from the city been applied for, or has it already been received? That no equipment or process shall be used in the processing which creates noise, dust, vibration, glare, fumes, odors, or electrical interference detectable to the normal senses beyond the property boundaries. And that all processing and operations shall occur within an enclosed building. Like I said, this case is both a zoning exception and a site plan review, we'll take the zoning exception portion of that first, if that's okay with everyone. And with all of that said, is there someone for this particular, is there a representative of the applicant here and sir or ma'am, if you'd identify yourselves? And very briefly tell us what it is that you're proposing to do. I would remind you that most, everyone, all, everyone pretty much is muted on the Zoom call and you have to unmute yourself before you can be heard. Is there someone here to represent BPC Ventures?
Yes, my name is Mohammed, attorney for BPC Ventures.
And can I get your last name as well, sir?
Last name is Gaith.
G A?
G H A I T H.
Thank you very much. Please continue.
So to tell you a little bit about the project, it's a proposal to place a vertically integrated facility on Creek Street, so it would be a medical marijuana cultivation facility, processing facility, and dispensary or provisioning center. The project is gonna entail construction of a portion of the larger property that will be sectioned off from the existing use. And developed in pieces, primarily the cultivation aspect first with provisioning and processing to follow. That's, that's about it for the summary.
Okay. The applicants have, either have or applied for the necessary licensing from the state?
Yes, yes, this.
And they have applied for a permit from the city?
They had previously received one and were applying for renewal.
Okay. One of the things that is required is, as I mentioned in my review, that no equipment or process shall be used in the processing which recreates noise, dust, vibration, glare, fumes. One of the things that we expect from applicants that we don't have yet on this would be some a, let's see, a written review of how it is they propose to particularly abate any, any odors or fumes from the facility.
Yes, absolutely, I mean, that should have been included in our business plan, if it wasn't, I apologize, and we, we do have one prepared.
Okay.
Noise mitigation plan.
Okay. Okay. And that all processes will occur within the enclosed building.
Correct.
Okay. Um, we also need to look at the general criteria. That the granting of the permit will not adversely affect environmental conditions or the value of surrounding properties. It should be a benefit, we would hope that improvements to this particular property would be a benefit to, to surrounding properties. Is the proposed use compatible with the adjacent and surrounding properties?
Yes.
It is zoned for this use. As is the city's future land use plan. Um. Commissioners, any questions for the petition?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So if I understand correctly, there are two businesses operating on this property, correct?
Correct.
Will be. Alright. And the property is owned by Masonic Building LLC?
Yes.
So maybe this is a question for staff, but how do we implore A.J. Brady Sand and Gravel to accomplish what they need to do to allow this project to go forward?
So in the discussions with this applicant, I haven't talked to A.J. Brady, but before they can pull anything, those need to come into compliance, so the dirt piles that are mentioned need to come into compliance, all screening needs to come into compliance, so we won't let this facility pull any permits till that site is in compliance. So.
I, I understand that aspect of it, and that makes sense to me, but if we, are we going to approach Brady, or how do they find out about this?
So if I could interject, they the, the property is, is leased to both tenants, so really there's an underlying landlord who's responsible. But what we've done is we've advised this applicant, the site plan is a site plan for the entirety of the site. It's not a divided parcel, there aren't two parcels here, so this is one on divided parcel that's owned by, as I said, the Sonic Building. I'll see, it was Jim Brown. And the, the site plan has to represent a conforming layout for the entirety of the site. And we've struggled, staff struggled with the applicant and trying to get them to represent something that does that, so for example, A.J. Brady has outdoor storage, as you can see, and outdoor storage is required to be, be screened, and in essence, it's another it, it really would have been probably, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, another zoning exception use, but it already exists. What we've done is just, purposes of the site plan hold them that we need to see a site plan as conforming for both uses, if it's gonna have any prospect of
Which, which I would suggest we discuss when we get to the site plan. And at the moment, just focus on the zoning exception permit relative to these, there's some questions relative to that. If that's okay with folks? Other questions for the applicant relative to these zoning exceptions? Kate, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular proposal? Jeremy, did we receive any written or phone comments on this, on this proposal? No. Okay. Commissioners, we've, we have reviewed the requirements for a zoning exception permit for a marijuana facility. And I would suggest that those both general and specific requirements for this proposal have been met. And that if we so wish to grant a zoning exception permit for it, that we would be able to do so.
Move to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Watson? And support?
Or Taylor.
Support from Taylor. Commissioners, any additional discussion on the motion to approve a zoning exception permit? For a marijuana growth facility and dispensary 1139 Treat Street.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest that in this case, because there are questions about the site plan, in most cases, but also in most cases, that you condition that approval of a, of a site plan for the property and compliance there was.
I will amend my motion to say upon approval of the site plan and completing the site plan.
Sir.
I support the, the revised motion.
Okay. Again, commissioners, any discussion on the motion? So the motion is to approve the zoning exception permit for 1139 Treat Street with the condition that there's also an approved site plan. And that any, any contingencies on the site plan are met prior to the granting of the zoning exception. Is that everyone's understanding of the motion? There is no, if there is no additional discussion, other than Jeremy, roll call vote, please.
Love? Yes. Wetherby?
Support.
Johnson?
Support.
Watson?
Support.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Dallas?
Support.
And Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Motion pass seven zero.
Okay. Then we'll take a look at the site plan for this same facility.
Michelle, just FYI, it's, the site plan can be seen past this report in this particular packet, if they need to.
And commissioners have, the copy of the site plan was in your packet. Sir, what is it you'd like to tell us about the site plan?
So the site plan quite clearly shows the proposed property. I know Greg and Jeremiah noticed some things on there that maybe weren't listed, we also have Jeremy Pickford on. Jeremy, if you wanna come on and explain, he's the architect who did the actual site plan. So he'll be able to answer some of those questions more thoroughly than I would, having drawn it. But I will say, one of the, the, the issues that Greg and Jeremiah spoke about, about the neighboring use, well, the, the co-use of this parcel was an area of confusion for us as well as the applicant. There was a lot of back and forth on this application, specifically with regard to the site plan and whether or not it's conforming, and a lot of the issue, especially for us, was where the the issues and that they were related actually to Jim Brown's use of the property. And us having to conform the whole parcel as opposed to just the, the section of the parcel that we are. So I will just condition that first, I think Jeremy is on as well, so Jeremy, if you wanna take it from there.
Um, yeah, I guess, do we wanna go through each of the issues, or how do you want? I, I noticed.
Jeremy, I guess the, the big question is, is that you understand that the entire parcel will have to conform to any of these requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and I think a few of them have already been addressed on there, so.
You know, I, I gotta say and I'm kinda glad you're here. This is probably one of the slightest site plans that I've seen in quite a long time. You know, I don't see any, is there a scale on your, in, we get kind of a reduced version of it, so, and maybe it's just my eyesight?
The scale's the upper right hand corner.
Yeah?
Right, right below the North Arrow.
Hey, got it, thank you. Is, is the Is the is the building sprinkled?
Um. I'm not sure on that. That would be something for the architect to answer for that. The interior building plan is not something that we're involved with.
Is there a accessible stand pipe?
Um, a stand pipe? No, there are hydrants noted on the site plan.
Could you point them out? I mean, just give me a general idea of where they are.
Um, so looking at, we're on sheet, I believe. Three right now, you'll see one right on Treat Street. There is a call out showing it as two hundred and I pull mine up. Two hundred and seventy-eight feet from the site, there is a site hydrant to the south. And
Okay.
One to the north as well.
Okay.
The future.
I I see that one.
Maybe that's who we want.
There's one on Beecher Street, too.
Okay, okay. Are you altering, are you making any alterations to the exterior of the building?
Not that I'm aware of. The exterior of the building will
They're going to operate a growth facility with all those garage doors. Is that correct?
Yeah, hold on, Mike. Jeremy, you just did the 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 civil work, right? You're not the architect, correct?
Oh, I'm not. I'm the engineer. Building questions, I'm not going to be too much help for you.
One of one of the requirements for our site plan are elevation drawings, and I don't see those here. That's why I was asking about exterior elevations.
We have to get with our architect and provide those that way then.
Um, where will, if if it's to be used as a retail, you know, operation, which is what part of the proposal is, where will customers access the building in?
The southeast corner, southeast corner of the building is where the entrance would be.
Yeah, and where will customer parking be?
Hey, Mike, we're asking a lot of questions that I don't think Jeremy's going to know. I I mean, it would have been nice to have the building architect here.
Probably that they're relevant questions to whether we're going to approve the site plan or not.
I get that. I get that. But we're asking Jeremy stuff he's not going to know, and he's just spitballing. Uh, like, I I kind of feel like we need, should have had the the actual architect here to answer these questions.
Yeah, I interject really fast. Um, so on the last page, my issue is there is a floor plan, but I I mean, it's such a bare minimum floor plan that I wonder if they even had an architect. It's hard for me to know what is going on in this building. And inside of your packet, I noted, I can't even tell where their trash is, whether it's outside, inside. Um, I don't know square footage or rooms to do any calculations. So I, you know, I I would ask the applicant, is there an architect at this point?
There is an architect. Um, I'm not sure why he's not on this call. I'll have to get with the actual applicant Phil and discuss what these questions.
Because I got to tell you, until we have that information, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with moving forward with consideration of the site plan. I commissioners, anyone else feel similarly, or?
I I concur with you. There's not enough information here for me to make a good decision. And there's so many things on this list that I I kind of don't understand why it's even in front of us that they've got to deal with before moving forward.
Well, I agree.
I can, yeah, I concur.
I would like to.
I agree too. I agree too.
Um, I apologize. I tried to address a couple of the questions, but I was on mute. Uh, this is Phil Fable um with BPC. Um, the uh, the, I'm sorry, the construction uh um, so the construction documents from the architect are complete and they can be delivered as well. Uh, specifically to the question of the garage doors, those the plan is those will all be blocked up. And we do have that diagram or the the elevations all all laid out as well. Um, so.
But Phil, though we don't have them tonight to take a look at, you know, that's uh.
That is correct. I didn't realize that we needed those delivered to you for tonight.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, in the ordinance, there's a whole list of of expectations for a site plan. And there's a whole bunch of them here that we're missing, so.
Um, I can still address the questions in the report as that pertained to the engineering. There are questions that can be answered. There is a call out for a privacy fence in front of A.J.'s dirt pile. You can see it right there on sheet three. Dale's there, too. The dumpster pad is labeled on sheet four. Been called out.
A minute.
No, he's right. It's on sheet four. That's correct.
Uh, go through the questions in the report, and we can answer those at least. Is that just?
You know, it's a, Jeremy, it's just the fact that we're going to have to revisit it anyway. Part of me says we might as well do it all in one process.
Okay, I just wanted to note that they are addressed, so.
Yeah.
I mean, they're on the report, but they've already been on the site plan, so. Well, I understand that the architectural part is the part that's not addressed, but the engineering section, the civil section has been.
I'd much rather address all this at once.
Yeah, me too.
I agree.
I I move to move this to the next available meeting.
Um, I put a motion to table this.
Uh, motion to.
Support.
And who's from Chad?
Yes.
Okay. Um, motion to table, there's no discussion on that. All those in favor of the motion, please, in case, so by saying hi.
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 There any opposed? Okay, um, gentlemen, we would hope to be able to look at this in detail at our regularly scheduled October meeting then, which I think would be probably Tuesday, October sixth, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, uh, case thirteen seventy-two South Main Street, case twenty oh thirty-five, excuse me, at thirteen seventy-two South Main Main Street. This is also a zoning exception from the site plan review for an indoor arcade in what I believe previously was the old Big Lots building or Big Lots property in a strip mall there in a large mall area. Again, is there someone here to uh, represent the applicant?
Yep. Hi, Michael. This is Mike Niklewitz. I'm the architect working with Aaron.
Yes. Again, Mike, if you'd very briefly tell us what it is they're proposing to do. And again, at the moment, we're, let me, let me back up just a second. Because at the moment, we are looking at the zoning exception permit and the um generally speaking, the only unusual requirement for a facility of this type is that the there's a hundred foot buffer between this and residential properties. There are residential properties behind the building. The applicant appealed to the zoning Board of Appeals last month and was granted a variance for that. I, the exact distance, the variance escapes me at the moment, but uh, like I said, the the residential property abuts it from the rear. Uh, but it was the ZBA's contention that because almost all of the business activity takes place on the front of the building worthy of a variance, and they and they granted that variance. Um, the other things we need to consider is uh, would there be any adverse environmental conditions or effects or value of surrounding properties? Uh, I would suggest not uh, that the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding properties. Uh, it would certainly seem so. Uh, the future land use plan calls for this to be a shopping center. Uh, with that said, and and Mike, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step on your on your talk there, but very briefly, tell us what it is they're proposing to use the building for.
Oh, that's fine. Um, this, what they want to do is take over that Big Lots tenant space, which is a little bit over twenty-six thousand square feet, and um, put in a an arcade with some um like a beverage bar and a short order site foods. Um, so essentially, it's just a um, a large arcade, like a like a Dave and Buster's. I've I've heard people compare it to.
Not necessarily relevant to the details of the discussion, but will there be, will there be a liquor license? Will there be alcohol served?
Um, he does not have a liquor license, although he's not ruling that out. I think he would like to get a liquor license, but that's not part of the plan right now.
Okay. Like I said, I'm not sure. It's not necessarily relevant to either of the topics we have tonight. It was more just idle curiosity. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Niklewitz relative to a zoning exception? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this proposal? Jeremy, did we receive any phone calls or any written comments on on the zoning exception application?
Sorry, muted. No, we did not.
Okay. Um. Commissioners, any discussion?
Move to approve.
Sorry.
We have a motion for approval of the zoning exception permit from Commissioner Watson with support from Commissioner Taylor. We reviewed the requirements. And I would suggest that uh, they have been met, and we could approve this if we so chose. Is there any additional discussion on from commissioners? Hearing none, if we could have a vote, please.
Uh, Watson?
Support.
Johnson?
Or.
Gaus?
Support.
Taylor?
Uh, Taylor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
DeKovitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
Motion passed.
Okay, we're good with that. Now we'll take a look at the site plan review for this property. Which actually is pretty straightforward since this is an existing self-contained property, but again, uh Mike, this is your 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 drawings, and so I'll ask you to briefly walk us through what you're proposing to do.
Um, again, it's just, they have adequate parking. Um, they're making use of a vacant space. And um, you know, there will be some some food served in there, so it'll be, it'll be a destination place for families and kids and adults and all ages. The um, yeah, the parking lot is in decent shape. There's adequate accessible parking. Um, there's access all around this building. This is part of the Crossroads Mall. There, I think there's one other tenant space that's vacant, but I believe that one um has a potential tenant moving in soon.
And that's, that's a pretty small one, I think, too, isn't it?
It is, right. Right, so this is kind of a major anchor in this whole mall. And um, I know that Aaron has been successful running these arcades in the past. He's a young guy, but very um intuitive and and good at marketing, and I I think he would be very successful with this.
Are there any alterations to the front facade?
That's basically, yeah, any any questions, I'm I'm here to answer what I can.
Are there any proposed alterations to the facade of the of the building?
I'm sorry, I didn't get all of that.
Are there any proposed alterations?
Repeat that.
Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I, my question was, are there any proposed alterations to the facade of the building?
Yeah, I know it needs some paint. I know that there will be new signage on the building for um, the claw kickers and name of the arcade. Most of the renovation, though, will be on the inside.
So no significant physical alterations to the to the front of the building? No significant physical alterations to the front of the building? Is my microphone not working?
My computer is freezing up a little bit.
I think it's frozen.
Okay.
Better you can set really, really still.
And now you're muted, Mike. You're muted. There you go.
Back. I don't know what happened, but you okay, if my computer froze up a little bit, and then all of a sudden, it just, everything disappeared and it reconnected itself. So sorry about the sorry about that delay.
My question was, is so so there are no significant physical alterations to the front of the building? And he's.
Well, other than signage, I think that's.
Okay, very well.
Signage, they may put some planters out in front.
Other questions? From the commission?
Move to.
Well, is is there, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on the site plan review for this project? Based on the, on the staff review, uh and I'm not quite sure how they would handle this, but the the staff has suggested trying to break up large areas of the pavement uh, with some green planting islands. But I sus- I I I suspect that that's all common area out there. I'm not quite sure how that would work, but.
I'll I'll jump in quickly. I think the thought for me is, since we're doing the master plan, that excess parking is kind of obsolete at this point. Although I do worry that some of those businesses out front are overflowing into it. But one thing during the master plan is I'd like to start looking at putting islands in those shopping centers to have canopy trees in there to make it look nicer. Um, I mean, I've gone in that parking lot quite a few times, and it's never full. But at the same time, I can't say what his business will bring in, nor can I say the ordinance requires it. So it's just a suggestion that you're purview.
So my my question is, this is really an issue for the for the owner of the property, not the applicant, correct?
Well, I would, I would say whatever somebody applies in this situation, not unlike the ones uh, we reviewed for the marijuana facility, you know, that's with the, when they apply for site plan review, that's with the permission of the owner. And the owner, therefore, um landlord is going to do the thing, is going to need to do the things that are necessary to, for you to approve the use that they would like to have in their, in the shopping center or of the property. So I don't think you can conclude that you don't have control over the situation because it's a leased premises. You know, in leasing the premises, the landlord uh is going to have to do those things that are necessary to bring the site into compliance every time uh, that a new use that requires site plan review is proposed.
But Jeremiah just said that these aren't
That is.
In our ordinance, correct?
That is true. It's not, it's not something that would be required because the ordinance says there must be. Uh, you have some discretionary powers as as planning commission. If you found that it was necessary to facilitate the findings that you've already made, of course, for the zoning exception permit, for example, or for another reason, because the use wouldn't, uh, in your estimation, be approvable without those uh additional measures. You can, you can require things that may not be expressly called out in the ordinance if they are within your discretionary authority. That's that's a, that's a judgment for you to make. I mean, I think you know, you could conclude that the site would benefit from it. I think in every kind of parking lot like this, there are obstacles out there that really should be surrounded by by islands. There are things that happen and with cut-through traffic and such in a parking lot like this that makes circulation less uh safe without some islands in there to break them up. But does the ordinance specifically say there need to, you know, the the But does the ordinance specifically say there need to, you know, the anomaly about the B4 district? Maybe it was intended when it was, was written, or maybe it was just an oversight, is that none of the landscaping requirements of your ordinance, the interior landscaping requirements of your ordinance apply to B4 in the shopping center.
As much as I appreciate staff's comments on that, and I think it's all true, everything that Craig said is true. I'm not sure that requiring without some specific requirements, I'm not quite sure what would, what our expectations would be on a site like this.
I like the idea going forward, but I don't feel like that building was built 60, 70 years ago and they followed the rules then. Why should we force them now to do something and possibly hold up the redevelopment of a piece of the property?
I, I agree.
I, I do. I do also, and the concern that I have is that if we place the requirement on this particular parcel, does he just have to do enough to handle that parcel? Or does he have to do the entire parking lot, in which case?
Greg's point was that if, if it was our, in our discretion, we could say you need to redo the whole parking lot.
And I, and again, you shouldn't view it as, and we've had this issue, and we'll have it again with some other applicants who are in strip centers, you shouldn't view it as placing that requirement necessarily on the applicant. The applicant is applying with the blessing of the landlord and the landlord is joining it as for her application. So, you know, it's true that it's out of the scope of what any one individual tenant do, but over time you can't conclude that, you know, because properties are multi-tenant properties, you may never improve them because any one tenant couldn't handle the burden of that. The burden is on the landlord to do that. I'm not, I'm not trying to argue for that necessarily in this case, but as a general principle, you have that ability and you should have that expectation of commercial landlords who would be bringing forward new uses and older centers.
I, I understand that that it's the landlord's responsibility. I don't, I'm not saying it's the tenant's responsibility, but what I am saying is that after 60 or 70 years, now we're changing the game plan. And we could say evidently, we want you to put in 25 islands of certain sizes of a certain trees. And, and the landowner is going to say, whoa, wait a minute, you know, that project won't support that cost.
Well, is this something we should look at, changing the ordinance so that when more site plans come forward, they know they would have to change it then?
Well, yes. And, and I would, I would suggest that until we have some specific requirements, it would be difficult for us to, to impose any arbitrary ones on this particular project.
I don't, I don't feel that I expected you guys to approve that. It was more on the concept of these green islands. You know, eventually we will get developments in these and we do have to eventually address these when the master plan gets there. You know, that's why I put it, if you see it necessary, it doesn't seem like it seems necessary. And the ordinance doesn't require it, so you don't have to put that part in.
I would like to suggest that we keep an open mind about this and, and work on some, some specific requirements for future developments like this.
Yes, I agree with that. This needs to be addressed in our rewrite where if something like this were to go in again, yes, absolutely, we need to do that. But, you know, this is, to me, this is no different than like the city trying to tell me they don't like the color of my house and saying, well, you need to paint your house, like way I was supposed to do it when it was done. And now you're telling me I gotta spend money.
With that said, with that, following that discussion, is there
I make a motion to approve without the
Well, as you mentioned, yeah. And after they, to approve the site plan as presented by the applicant.
Before.
And what's the support from?
Me.
Bob, is that you?
That's me.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Watson, support from Commissioner Love for approval of the site plan for 1372 South Main Street. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, vote please.
Johnson?
Or.
Gauss?
Or.
Taylor?
Yes.
Kovaic?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
And Watson?
Or.
Passing unanimously.
Okay, well.
Thank you, commissioners.
Have fun. Case 20039 at 638 West Mahoney Street is an application for adaptive reuse of the YMCA building at that site to a mixed use. Now, adaptive reuse is something that we use when a building in its current configuration has become obsolete for that use. And the criteria that we need to look at when looking at adaptive reuse is would the new use be harmonious with or in accordance with the general objectives, intent and purposes of this ordinance? Will it be designed, constructed, operated, maintained and managed so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with existing or intended character of the general vicinity? Is it served adequately by essential public services? Will it not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighboring uses? And will it not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services? With that said, is there someone to speak for the applicant here? And if so, would you identify yourself?
Yeah, good evening. Jason Derby, D E R B Y from Creek Enterprise Antera Adrian LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Derby. If you would briefly tell us what it is you're proposing to do with the site.
Yeah, we would, we would like to purchase the building from YMCA of Lenawee. And then if this passes, we will lease the daycare, existing daycare facility back to the YMCA of the greater Toledo area. And then the existing office and workout facility would be leased to Creek Enterprise for our corporate office.
And it would be, with the exception of the daycare, it would be pretty much exclusively used as, as office or athletic facilities for your employees. Is that correct?
Yes, it's not open to the, to the general public. It will just be our employees. We currently are going to cube out the front workout facility into 25 cubes, I believe the drawing will show. And then use the office and then with an expansion possibly into the mini gym at a later date with another 50, I believe there's back there.
There would not be any manufacturing going on there at all. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. Strictly just corporate office.
No, no storage of materials or product or anything like that, either onsite or outside?
No, sir. We have, our corporate, current corporate office is in DeComsey, Michigan. We have a construction yard in Jackson, Michigan that stores outside equipment, but this would strictly just be office space.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Derby? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this proposal?
So just, this is Mayor Heath. So just to clarify, I know, I know where Creek Enterprises is in DeComsey, so there's the big reels of forgive my ignorance. I don't know what they look like, like wire, big rolls of wire. Did that not be stored then there at that facility at all then?
No, that, that facility you're referring to is actually Creek Plastics LLC on 50. My corporate office is over on Mohawk Street, kind of by the old, used to be J and B Gymnastics. But no, it would strictly be just corporate office in the Adrian facility.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the planning commissioner or ask any questions in that regard? Again, did we receive any written or phone comments on this proposal?
No, we did not.
Okay. Um. I have, I have to say, I think this is a, my own personal thoughts is this is not a bad use for that facility. And I certainly would prefer something like this than to see it go fallow. It's probably a less intensive use than it's, than it was as the Y. And at least as a, as a adaptive reuse, it keeps us from having to, to deal with rezoning the property and gives us some additional control over it for future use too then. Is there any staff comment to follow up on any of that?
So are we just voting on a adaptive reuse or are we doing a reuse and a site plan review?
Well, the adaptive reuse requires that we look at a, that we look at adaptive reuse proposing, supposes this footprint of the building isn't changing. And, but it does specify that we need to look at the interior use, how they intend to use the building. And that's why the adaptive reuse ordinance asks for drawings that show the, you know, the walls and rooms configurations and things like that. So technically, it's, it's not a site plan review, but adaptive reuse does expect us to look at, at the proposed uses, so.
So to answer your question, Mr. Chair, that if you look at the recommendations in the staff report, there's a list of issues with the, the condition of the site, which really should be addressed before it's reoccupied.
Okay.
And so we would urge you to make any approval conditional upon taking care of those sites.
Thank you. Why don't we review those for, for both ourselves and for the applicant? Parking lot will need, need to be leveled, sealed and restripped. Eastern entry, eastern entry. Okay, yeah, I know, should be widened to 24 feet to accommodate two-way flow of traffic that is proposed. Curbs need to be replaced. I presume this is in the parking lot we're talking about.
Especially along that entry, they're broken up because it's narrow and people have driven over those.
Okay. It needs signage for the entrances and exits. We either need to remove the dump, they're proposing that their trash handling will be indoors and with it just being an office, I would think that would be reasonable. There's currently a dumpster with no pad and that would need to be removed. Does not seem to be any need for changes in the lighting. Landscaping is already in place. Fencing on the west side of the property is in poor condition and appears to be chicken wire. Staff recommends that this be replaced with privacy fencing between the facility and the adjacent residential property. Mr. Direct, presume that you are, you're familiar with these recommendations?
I personally have not seen those, that list.
Okay, you have, will we be able to comply with most of those, do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I definitely agree that there was some deferred maintenance on the facility and parking lot that I, that I definitely am going to attend to. You mentioned dumpster. I mean, there is a dumpster currently on the facility. I would like to maintain it. One dumpster, we do have enough trash for that. I don't know what your recommendation is on that.
There'd be a concrete pad for it and that be enclosed so that it's not an ice ore.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Again, unless you're not going to use it, in which case, you know, if you're going to handle all your trash inside, but if you're going to have a dumpster, it should be on a concrete pad. We should have either fencing or landscaping to enclose it.
That, that is fine. Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Your chair, may I jump in?
Yes, please.
So I want to clarify two things. One of the curving that needs to be redone is around the front there. If you see where that turnaround is where the, it seems like buses would drop people off. Like they took bumper blocks previously and just painted them yellow and kind of made a makeshift curb. So that's the curving we were discussing. And then also the eastern drive too. If you look at an overview of it, you can see cars have made their own path. The fence on the west side does not necessarily have to be a privacy fence. This could be landscaping to screen. It doesn't, so they could plant, you know, whatever they want to offer to you instead of putting a fence in it would most likely look better than a privacy fence.
As long as there's screening between those part, those eastern or the eastern side, is that what we're talking about, eastern side, Jeremy, or western side?
It's hard for me to tell whether that house put that up because they seem to have a garden back there and maybe they did put that fence up. You know, I, I didn't hear any complaints from them, but I think that still with our screening requirements, they should plant something maybe to get in between there. I think that the way that they configured the parking for the handicapped accessables is better, so you know, I'm, I'm happy with that. They're moving it from that side. And so maybe that'll take away from that.
Um. Okay. Any additional discussion, commissioners? We would entertain a motion for approval of the adaptive reuse and the required diagrams that go with that with the condition that the issues raised are satisfied, are completed to staff satisfaction.
So move recognitions.
That was a motion by Love with, second by Johnson?
Yes, support.
Okay. Commissioners, any additional discussion? Jeremy, roll call vote, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Gauss?
Yes.
Kovaic?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
Johnson?
Support.
And Watson?
Support.
Very well. Mr. Darby, thank you. Best of luck with that project. I think it's a, give me a nice addition there.
Thank you.
Folks, that concludes the action or business portions of our action portions of our agenda. We have some discussion items. One of them being a discussion requested by Kurt Valentine for potential storage building at his business in the B3 district. I believe Mr. Valentine is with him, with us. I see him there.
How are you?
Good evening. If, thumbnail sketch of what it is you're, what it is you're asking of us.
Just looking for some direction before I dive in. I own the building at 251 West Church Street where Dr. Garno is upstairs. My office is downstairs. I have a little bit of site storage in the rear. It's gated off presently because everybody keeps stealing my trailers and materials and et cetera. I guess I'm very available. Had a conversation with Commissioner Watson, a little bit with Jeremiah and Greg, and I'm just trying to look for some direction. I've got three trailers that I presently own. Two of them are open trailer, one's an enclosed trailer. I've also got a SkyTrak that I own and some other stuff. In winter time, I'd like to have a spot where I could tuck them other, under that they didn't fill up with snow every time I went to use them. So I'm looking for a simple solution, nothing fancy. One of the things that I thought would work would be some sort of oversized carport. Commissioner Watson hated the term Quonset hut. And I think
I stole that from Dr. Kovaic.
Quonset hut could be a very broad term because there's a lot of different shapes of them. You know, there's the simple arch ones. There's some that have somewhat of a pitch to them. There's some that have taller sides. And, and I understand, I mean, if, if I was going to put it right up on the street, I wouldn't do it to myself. I wouldn't like it. But for those of you that are familiar with the property, and I think Jeremiah and the interim administrator took a little walk down there, it's not even visible from the street. It's behind the building. It's over the embankment behind the Salvation Army. So you've got the Salvation Army property, then it rolls over the embankment. There's tall trees and then you really can't even see back there. So I'm not putting it on the street. The neighboring properties around me are either screened by fence or trees. So my neighbors can't even see me. So I'm looking for a simple, cost-effective solution where I can place my trailers and such underneath. You know, any of the structures that you're looking at, I gave them a, I supplied a picture with like three different styles of all steel buildings. And I'm not, you know, doing big foundations and, you know, you're going to treat it like I'm building a factory and we treat it like a carport. I can put any of those up for about $5,000. So it's a cost-effective way for me to keep the snow off of my trailers and equipment during the winter months when the luster of scraping snow off of everything goes away in a big hurry. So all I'm looking for is direction. If you don't like any of them, if you like some of them, if you might allow something in some general direction on how to proceed. Because again, if this gets too cumbersome, I'll just forget it and I'll scrape the snow off of it. But I would like to think that there's some, you know, easy way to go about this that's not too cost prohibitive. And everything that I'm proposing, I know a couple of those, the ends are closed in. Everything that I'm proposing would be just open ends. Tuck it underneath, keep the weather off, call it good.
Kirk, did you say open end? You would not have a, a door on either end?
Correct, sir.
So, Mr. Chair, just to agree with what Kirk said, Chairman and I did go visit the site. I, I was frankly surprised how completely invisible this location is from pretty much anywhere around it. It's, because of the topography, it's below the Salvation Army site. And tucked all the way in behind his building, as he said, it's screened trees all the way around on the rear. And you can kind of get a sense from that picture you're looking at that the site falls off down into that area. And so you would, you really wouldn't see it.
I, I drove back there today and it, it is completely sequestered, you know, you, you can't see anything back there from outside the property. And Kurt, I don't see any problem with what you're proposing. My, my issue, and I would ask staff if they have a solution for this, is this is in the, this is what's zoned for the central business district. And if we say that this is okay, how do we, how do we then say to someone else like on the corner of Wammy and, and Winter Street, no, you can't do it there?
Well, I think that, that, so your standard for accessory buildings and B3 are that they have to be compatible. Right? And in this case, is the site characteristics, virtually any building can be compatible because it's visible.
Out of sight, yes.
That would not be true on every site, obviously, but it is true on this.
Oh, Greg, legally, we would have a leg to stand on to say, since I can't see Kirk's building back in there, it's okay. But since I can see your building on the corner, you can't put up a Quonset hut because it's visible to everybody and everything.
Yeah, and I, I think more particularly, it's the juxtaposition of the architecture. I think Jeremiah can read to the exact language from the ordinance. It relates to its compatibility with the principal structure. And in this case, the site, because of the topography and configuration of the site, there is no dissonance between the principal structure and the accessory structure because it's so, so completely screened. I mean, imagine if somebody else, very visible site, created a whole, you know, landscaping milieu around the, around the structure, you would view that differently than if it was just sitting out there on daylight.
So, so what kind of action would we need to take? It's not on the agenda. We, we haven't done, you know, any notice on this, so we can't act on it tonight even if we wanted to. But what kind of action would we need to take if we did want to approve such a use?
I, I, I think because it's B3, you have to look at a site plan. I mean, that's what we did for Grasshopper, as you'll recall. Similar situation, an accessory, just, or it's building, an accessory building, but leave the B3 district requires any new construction to be so into site plan, with the plan commission.
Okay.
So that would fix, just add on, that would fix the location. That would give you the basis for determining that.
Other commissioner questions or comments? Gordon?
You knew it. Well, like you, I too drove over and looked at the site today. You know, it's well hidden behind the building. I can't imagine it being a problem. And just, you know, my comment for Kirk is, any one of the three would work. I like the one in the middle the best. For whatever that's worth.
Me too.
I guess, I guess what we're, I guess what Kurt is looking for here is a, is maybe just a general consensus that we would, that the commissioner would be favorably inclined towards seeing the detail of something like this.
I certainly would.
Is that correct?
Gordon?
Yep.
I would also.
Robert as well? Yep.
Sure.
Yep.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, Kurt, does that give you enough to go on?
Yeah, I certainly appreciate it. I didn't want to start right out of the box with a big old site plan and a bunch of drawings just to, you know.
Well, we, we, we used my efforts. I would suggest too, this could probably be a pretty simple site.
Okay.
Yeah. The Grasshopper one was pretty simple and so it's an accessory building. It doesn't need to be insane, so.
Yeah. Okay.
I've got surveys for the entire site, so I think associated could probably put me together something.
Okay, good enough.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, also on the discussion agenda is a request from M&amp;H Pump regarding the potential industrial use of the Garfield School site. And have someone here to talk, to speak to that particular man. Ms. Burner, are you, are you here?
She's in chat, has said that her, her phone went down.
Okay, well, we can, we can hang on.
I guess I can kind of explain our discussions with her while we're waiting for her to.
Get back with us.
And she has no mic on her computer, so. We could, we could communicate with her by chat. So the school district and I see the superintendent is with us tonight also has entered into a purchase and sale agreement to, to sell this to M&amp;H, subject to them being able to get the zoning approvals that they need. And I have to say, when we first heard about it as staff, we were pretty concerned with the idea. This is the middle of a, a single-family residential neighborhood where the school used that. As we thought about it and, and, and the very limited use to which they want to put it and the, and the vast amount of property that is available there. It seemed like there could be some opportunities if it was done through a creative zoning technique. Ideally, I would say a planned unit development approach or possibly conditional rezoning. I mean, clearly you could not rezone the site to I1, which they would need to accommodate their warehousing use. Because you, you couldn't allow for all the other uses that, that that district would, would permit. However, if it were done in a particular way and, and M&amp;H Pump has prepared this drawing that is in your packet and there's an actual, there's a rendering if we can get that up instead of just the aerial that shows where buildings might be on the property. And this notes about how the property could be organized. That could happen, there you go. That could happen. I think the neighbors could be protected. And, but you could have a very low intensity use of the site, which might be more compatible with what surrounds it. Keep in mind, as you think about this, that in addition to the railroad track to the south, which currently divides the, so if you look at the very southeastern corner of that photograph, that is M&amp;H Pump's current facility. They're, they're separated from the site unfortunately by the railroad track and then the blue dashed line that you see going through there is the future route of the east side Quanis Trail. So that will also separate them off. And, and access is a little bit of an issue, but we talked to the, to the applicant or to M&amp;H Pump, they're not really an applicant yet. We suggested that really the Winter Street access was probably the only one that would be appropriate for, for this use crosses a residential street. The Winter Street excesses, the property that fronts on Winter Street is, is reasonably wide. You could create a drive-through there that could be screened on each side from the homes. There are homes on either side of it, but I think the neighbor neighbors on either side are aware of what they are proposing and they have a friendly relationship with them. Kind of like the opportunity that could be presented as a, as a public benefit for a PUD proposal of maybe utilizing the existing parking lot that's still there from Garfield School in conjunction with the trail in order to have sort of a trailhead there. And I think the M&amp;H Pump folks would be amenable that as part of a PUD proposal or a conditional rezoning proposal as well. I think the folks from M&amp;H Pump may have dialed in now and may be available by phone.
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome, Ms. Burner. Mr. Elliott just pretty much gave your talk for you, I think.
Yes, he did. Thank you very much, Mr. Elliott. You did a great job. So I have a, a basic sketch here of what we would be proposing and it would be done in a few phases with the two buildings and a small little shop closer to the tracks being what's done first. And then over, I have marked out for the trailhead for the Quanis Trail, which is actually a very nice sized piece of property. There's already natural vegetation for some of it to, to obscure the trail from seeing the property with two fence lines with vegetation in between it, between the railroad tracks and the property. And then along one of the drives, so we would put some other tree markings along where the houses are to block them off. Any questions?
Questions or comments from commissioners? I, I, you know, again, what the folks here are looking for is just not, not an approval or even a denial, but just general kind of consensus. Is this something we would be interested in knowing more about?
What will you be, what, what will you be doing? Like, is it just warehousing or do you have some sort of manufacturing?
Well, we might assemble pumps, but it's not manufacturing. It's pre-bought parts that are just assembled together, a stack. And that's it. Other than that, it would be more warehousing. We are a wholesale supply house, so we have some customers that come to our site, but most of our business is done by delivery. So we bring product in, we deliver it. And, and that's about it. It would be storing product. It would give us the room to expand some of the stuff we're storing and put some of what is outside at our other location undercover so it stays cleaner and well-kept.
I have a question. Does the drive pass from Main Street through the property over to Winter Street? Is that, are there entrances on either end of the property?
Gordon, I don't think there's any driveway there at all right now.
Well, what's the opening here on Main Street? It's not really an opening. There's a yellow, yellow line.
Well, there is. There, there, there is an entrance. There is a, a, a shared use. Although it's part of Garfield property right there off of Main Street, but one house has a shared use, I believe Eastman, to get to their property there. And then there is an entrance, although the drive was, the asphalt was taken off. That's where the buses came in off of Winter Street at one point. So there's still an entrance there. Just no drive. It's all grass now. But from the road, it still has the, the entrance to the drive.
Okay, I, I'm assuming, which is always dangerous, that your inventory, assembly parts that can come in on some kind of truck.
Correct.
Is there a concept of what size that might be?
They come in on semi trucks, what size trucks? I mean.
Semi trucks.
They vary.
That answers the question. That's all I needed.
They come in on semis, the same way they do to our other property on Winter Street there.
Thank you.
But we would only come in and out from, say, the Winter Street entrance, just because I'm not sure the one off Main Street is big enough really for that and we don't want to have them on Cross Street at all. So I would be proposing as part of this condition that they just come in and out of the Winter Street.
Okay, and then I would ask the staff, is there enough room on the property to turn around a semi?
I, I asked the M&amp;H Pump folks that exact question when we met last week and it points out that they turn around in their current site right now, which is a bit smaller than.
So if you see my little piece of property now over there, they come in, they turn around and they back up to a dock we have at the back of that property. So I've had 54-foot semis able to come and turn around on that property. They would probably be like astounded at how much room they would have on the other property.
I understand.
To do that.
I assume that, I assume that you're like a nine-to-five operation, no second shift or just regular business hours?
We're eight to five Monday through Friday. We don't work weekends. I mean, unless I come in to take care of an individual, but we, we are not open for business on Saturdays and Sundays and we close at five.
Other, other questions or comments?
Okay.
Folks, speaking only for myself, and, and we should say to to the applicant or to Ms. Burner here, that you know, until we were to get a formal proposal, anything we would say tonight is just in the matter of suggestion as opposed to approval or denial or anything like that. There's nothing on the agenda here this evening. I would be interested to see a proposal relative to either a planned unit development or a conditional rezoning. I would not, as, as Greg pointed out, I don't see us rezoning this property outright to industrial use. I, I just couldn't see that happening. But I would certainly be interested in a planned unit development or a conditional rezoning. Particularly in one that eliminated Cross Street as any kind of commercial traffic because it just wouldn't be right. That's a residential street and probably wouldn't support any trucks besides that in terms of wear and tear. But that's my opinion. Commissioners? Other thoughts?
I have to agree with you, Mike. The one thing I would like to bring up or suggest is the neighbors in that neighborhood are very passionate, as we knew from the previous proposal. I don't know if we want to have it on the agenda to have, you know, just a little public comment or something, or is that putting the cart before the horse?
Brian, I think until we have, until we have a formal proposal, I think it is. Now, if, if the folks from the pump company want to contact the neighbors on their own, that would be, you know, maybe a wise move. But I think for us to have a public hearing or even kind of an informal public hearing. But I think for us to have a public hearing or even kind of an informal public hearing until we have a formal proposal, you know, just leaves us open to a lot of questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying, but, you know, we do have precedent for neighborhood meetings to take place in advance. And Mr. Benke will know that, you know, we met at Comstock Park to talk about the McKinley site, where they're, you know, suggested condominiums and whatnot. And we invited, or I didn't, but City Hall did, invited the neighborhood residents to come in and see what the plans were and see the artist renderings and whatnot, and express their opinions about what, you know, what potentially the planning commission is going to look like. So I don't know that it's a terrible idea. I'll defer to you and the other commissioners, but certainly it's been done before and I certainly wouldn't be opposed to seeing it done again.
And Gordon, neither one, I was just thinking in terms of until we have something specific in terms of this is what the plan is. I'm not sure that that would, it would just raise more questions than we would be able to answer necessarily.
And that's perfectly fine. I just, you know, I think we ought to have some kind of meeting or some, as Commissioner Watson suggested, something to expose the neighborhood residents to what it is we're talking about before we start going in and looking at site plans and, you know, making some decisions there. We should get some feedback from the neighborhood, as Commissioner Watson said. It's a very passionate group and we've heard from them in the past. And I think before the train gets all the way out of the station, we ought to, you know, we ought to consider that.
Okay. Other Commissioner questions or comments? Again, I think Ms. Werner is looking for some direction here. And I'm inclined to say to her that yes, we would be interested in seeing a proposal within the constraints that we just mentioned. And because at the moment, I'm not sure we have enough information to have even a public, you know, a public forum on it.
I agree. There needs to be a lot more information, but this makes me much more agreeable to consider a proposal for a project like this in this area, especially knowing that we would be able to limit the zoning and not completely rezone it to a full industrial.
I guess, could you tell me what conditional rezoning is? I don't, to be quite honest, I don't care if it's industrial. That's what my other property is. So I was under the assumption that's what it needed to be to operate.
A conditional rezoning would be.
Whatever zoning I could do my business in, I'm fine with it. To me, it doesn't need to be industrial. So I'm looking for your guidance on what I could do zoning-wise to to operate the business there.
So if I were recommending something, I would recommend planning development. That's going to make the neighbors and the planning commission and the city most comfortable and be best able to effectuate what you want to do. But there are a lot of drawings associated with that. It's a two-step process. There's an initial sort of concept drawing and then a full site plan. What a conditional rezoning is, is it's a rezoning to an established district, but subject to conditions. So it could be a rezoning to I-1, but limiting you to only, you know, a certain use, only warehouse use, only in this location.
Only between these hours?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I mean, it accomplishes the same thing, but I would say in a more cumbersome way than you can accomplish it. Planning development.
And if you want me to talk to the neighbors or originate something, I would. Now, I did have a conversation with Ms. Lopez, the house that's right there adjacent to the drive. And she was very agreeable with it having it. Of course, she knows we're right on the other side of the tracks from her and knows the traffic that we have or don't have, and was very happy to hear that we might be doing something. So hopefully, if we do a neighborhood thing, that everyone else would be as agreeable as she was to it.
Greg, would it be appropriate for us to refer them to you or to Jeremy about the process for a planned unit development?
Of course.
And with the, you know, with the suggestion that we would be open to seeing a proposal, at least a preliminary proposal for a planned unit development here?
Yep.
And you should, and then the folks from the pump company from M and H should consult with either Jeremy or Greg Elliott as to what that process is.
Correct.
Does that, does that give you some direction?
When you're talking a planned unit development, are we still talking a conditional zoning thing? Are you just, I'm trying to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
It's a form of conditional zoning. It just, it has, as the name would imply, a plan associated with it.
Okay.
And so, you know, a little bit more detail than what you've shown here could be the concept plan, which would be like the zoning map for that particular piece of property. And then you'd follow up with a site plan for the things you were actually going to build.
And opposed to an out-and-out rezoning, which says, you know, you can do almost anything within that, within a whole long list of possibilities. A planned unit development says, here's where we're going to put the buildings and this is how we're going to use them. And then that's what you have to do.
Okay. Gotcha.
And if the building, if the property sells 20 or 30 years hence, then the new owner is also subject to either that planned unit development, the one that already exists, or they have to propose a new one. It gives us, it gives the city more control over it, over what can happen there, as opposed to just a out-and-out rezoning.
Okay.
But I would suggest to consult with the city staff as to the process for that, and they can be helpful in that regard.
Perfect. I appreciate the help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy, a shed size proposal we have here. I don't know if we, we did discuss this at our last meeting, just in general. This comes to us because the Zoning Board of Appeals, in the last two or three months, has heard a number of appeals for variances on the size of shed that we permit generally in a backyard, a storage shed. Currently, the ordinance specifies that it can't be any larger than 100 square feet, or generally a 10 by 10. And in the last couple of months, the ZBA has approved some that were up to 300 square feet or maybe even a little larger. And those were in our, the R1 district where people have particularly large yards. It was their recommendation that we take a look at this and see if we need to be a little, either a little bit more flexible or permit something a little larger. And Jeremy has put together a proposal here with two options. And Jeremy, I'll turn the floor over to you if you want to tell us what it is you've got here.
Oh, obviously, these are just options and not anything we have to change. The first option is kind of complicated, but it allows for us to do different sizes per different zoning districts. So every zoning district has a 25-foot rear yard setback. Depending on their lot width, we could do their lot width times that 25 and then pick a percentage. So right now I have it at 15%. So someone with 100-foot wide lot and take that 25 and times it by 15% could have a 375-square-foot shed without coming to ZBA. And obviously, this still goes towards lot coverage, so they can't go past the 30% lot coverage. You know, and you can see if there's, and 100 feet's going to be like a R2, R1-ish. Then there's 65 feet would be 244. That's more towards the R3, R4s, which are smaller zonings. And we can pick a cap on that, I would say, that we'd still want to go to ZBA. So, you know, that could be dependent upon your zoning district or dependent upon altogether. It could be 300, 350, 400. You know, and then we have a slight little snippet about a pie-shaped area, but that's if we chose that. Option two is currently, right now, under the ordinance, as weird as this is going to sound, we allow an accessory building and a shed. So on your house, you may have a garage, you may have an attached garage, and you may have a shed. The other proposal would be that we amend what we clarify as a shed. And if you choose to go over the hundreds, you know, maybe 150 or 200 square feet, we would then consider that your accessory building, you could no longer have a garage at that point. But that would require amending the definition and a section of that accessory use.
I personally like the percentage, because everybody's house is different. Everybody's lot's different. And, you know, it shouldn't matter. If my lot's huge, I should have a bigger, be allowed to have a bigger building than if I'm on a little postage stamp one over on university.
And as I said, it's, lot coverage will come into play too, so they can still only have 30%. Every one of them is 30%. So, you know, they're never going to have some giant 900-square-foot shed. It's just not going to happen. You know, they can't, they can't go over that maximum.
I'd be inclined, if we went with option one, I'd be inclined to use something a little, at the moment, it's arbitrary, but I'd be inclined to use something a little smaller than 15%. Because even at that, if it was 10%, that would give that first example a 250-square-foot shed. They're always eligible to apply for a variance if they really think that they have a, you know, compelling need.
We did talk about the 10%, but, you know, like a 70-foot wide lot is a pretty standard subdivision lot. And, you know, we don't have that calculation, but we have 65 foot. And the 25 foot is the standard rear yard setback. And so if, you know, for that size lot, you'd be restricting them to almost as small of a shed as they're allowed to have now. It just seemed to us that, you know, a shed up to 250 square feet is going to be reasonable on most size lots.
But Greg, I was thinking of my own lot, which is 50 by 120. And if I use that formula, I get almost a 200-foot square foot shed, which, you know. Of course, at that point, probably the lot coverage comes into play, so.
Was that 50-foot wide or 100-foot wide?
50-foot wide by 120 deep.
So the 120 deep, we wouldn't, so we would do 50 by 50 to 15%.
Gives me 190, roughly 190 square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a super big shed, though.
So you have more depth, so.
You just have a super tiny lot.
I agree with Commissioner Watson. I like option one. I guess I do have a question, though, that having watched a couple of the ZBA meetings, we asked to look at height of these buildings or these sheds?
There is a height, there's a height limitation. I don't have it off the top of my head, but there's a.
I think it's 14 feet, I think, Gordon.
Okay, so I thought it was 14 feet, but, I mean, is there going to be a situation where the larger the shed, the higher the ceiling or the higher the roof's going to be? I'm not an architect, so I don't know.
No, really, it should be one floor, so it shouldn't be higher than one story.
That was the whole point of the 14 feet, is that that was more than enough to have one pretty tall story, so.
I've learned something tonight. Thank you, Mike.
Other comments on this to give Jeremy some direction? Jeremy, it sounds like people are inclined to option one.
I can bring you something.
Okay. Any other input to staff on that? Okay, Jeremy, you got enough to go on there?
Yeah.
Okay. Folks, is there any other business to come before us this evening?
Mr. Chair, I would like to ask you to choose a date for a special meeting. I believe the city commission is going to ask me to put forward a proposed rezoning of the, or a portion of the Marvin Farm property to facilitate a potential property sale that we're working on. And I'll just tell you, it would involve the expansion of the, of the west marijuana overlay. But I expect that to be discussed at the September 8th meeting. And in order to facilitate sale timelines, we would like to try to do a special meeting in the week that starts, somewhere in the week that starts September 14th, to consider to set a public hearing for that and consider whether or not, well, I'm sorry, it wouldn't have to be later than the week of the 14th. It would have to be.
Week of the 22nd.
Yeah, the week of the, well, yeah, week of the 27th. So to consider that in advance of when the next city commission meeting would then be, because your meeting in October falls one day after it. And trying to line it up with when first reading or introduction could be handled at the city commission's first meeting in in October. We would like to try to get that in still this month. And, you know, it will only happen if city commission directs me to do that on September 8th, but I'd like to have a date that could work for us in that of that.
Folks, would we be open to a meeting on Tuesday, the 22nd?
Works for me.
Works for me, Taylor.
Sounds good.
Okay. Gordon, is that?
Yeah, sounds good.
Chad?
Yes.
Okay. Greg, it sounds like we could certainly come up with a quorum on Tuesday, the 22nd. I would presume that would be also in the evening, a seven o'clock meeting.
The problem, so, I'm with the 22nd, as I don't think it's 15 days from the 8th. So I have, we have to have time to send out a public hearing.
Okay.
Ahead of that, so I think we'd have to go to the next week. I was doing it in exactly the wrong order the first time. I'm sorry, but I need to provide myself 15 days notice after I get the direction to do it.
Okay.
Doesn't necessarily have to be a Tuesday, does it?
No.
It does not have to be.
No, we could do it later that week.
We could do Thursday, the 24th?
Yeah, I mean, I'm available then, but I'm retired. I'm available anytime.
I cannot do the 24th.
That works for me, Taylor.
24th works?
I cannot.
Who could?
No, I cannot.
Gordon cannot?
No, I can.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry. You're available anytime. That's right.
If I got the notice.
It's okay for me, Mike.
Okay, Nancy? Okay, good?
Okay, by me.
You're gone. Brian, how about you?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay, we, Greg, we could come up with a quorum on the 29th as well. I'm sorry, Thursday, the 24th, excuse me. And I think that gives you time.
Yeah, we can do it. It's the 24th.
Okay, so we may or may not have a meeting then, but folks, if you'd keep that date, put that on your calendar as a potential meeting time. I'll send out an email as a reminder to folks tomorrow sometime, just to pencil that in.
Yeah, I think we should do everything that we can to make this meeting happen. It's kind of an.
Well, we'll do our best. Greg, any updates on the comprehensive plan? Anything else we need to do? We got another special meeting coming up in that regard?
We don't have one scheduled. Again, if anybody else has comments on the draft, we got a, we got a couple. But if anyone else has comments on the draft they presented last time, please get those to us so that we can get those edits made and follow along.
Those, Greg, straight to you.
Yeah, or to Jeremy.
Okay. Is there any other business to come before us this evening? I meant to say, as we, when we opened the meeting, my apologies for not getting in there. I wanted to welcome Greg in his new position as city administrator and tell him that, at least speaking only for myself, but I'm very happy to have a person in that position with a. but I'm very happy to have a person in that position with a zoning and planning background. I think that's a, in my mind, that's a big plus. Thank you, Greg, for being here. Any other comments? Robert?
So just want to also echo and thank the city commission. Since Mr. Elliott's been on board, I believe I've had more communication about the Garfield property in the last two weeks than I have in the last two years. So, thank, thank you, Greg. That's one of the areas that obviously is a major issue and concern with us from the, the school district perspective. Obviously, representing the, the land-owning body of that property over the last seven years, very near and dear to the neighborhood's heart is the safety and security of that location and their, their homes. The, the deal with M&amp;H Pump, I think, achieves multiple areas that the school district has been looking for. Number one, first and foremost, not only from the school district perspective, but as a city resident perspective, making sure that, that Garfield property did not turn into another Jefferson School. And then, secondly, making sure that we move forward with a, a plan that gets that property back onto the tax rolls. We've had a number of individuals and organizations that were nonprofits that inquired with us that didn't meet our threshold to sell the property and that would have resulted in, my thought through the analysis, the failure of that business and that land filming into blight, and those sort of things. So M&amp;H Pump obviously has a long track record with support of the community, support of the neighborhood. With Angie and I, we went and we walked the neighborhood, introduced her to some of the, some of the landowners and residents of the surrounding property. And there's a lot of excitement, much more excitement with them moving into that property possibility instead of, obviously, the workforce housing component. As much as I would have loved to have a, a place for new teachers to live under the workforce housing of M&amp;H Partners, there's much more excitement, I think, here with the neighbors, because they know M&amp;H Pump secures the property, that they respect the neighborhood, that they're a long-term commitment to the neighborhood. And I think that that's an important piece moving forward. I do like the idea of that community conversation. We've had those in the past at the Garfield site with the neighbors and the residents. And again, safety and security was the major topic that came forward there. And I would just kind of caution from the pulse that I would have from that neighborhood that there would be less concerns about M&amp;H Pump taking possession of that property and more concerns about parking and a trailhead for the Quanis Trail. You know, I've had complaints over the years with that parking lot there and people drinking and drugging and sexing in that parking lot. We've maintained it the best that we could. We've cut trees down to improve the view, those sort of things. So I, I think it's a great idea to get some input from the neighbors about the safety of the neighborhood, and that's definitely something that those neighbors are, have, hold near and dear to their heart. And again, thank you, Mr. Elliott, for all the, the help and guidance the last couple of weeks on this.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you. Anything else, folks? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.